Right there.
Right in the middle. Alright, we're live. Yep. Come up a little bit. Go, start.
It's weird camera to me. Alright, recording.
Alright. Hello again, good evening. I'm with the Forest Hills Council. We'd like to welcome you to our community tonight. My name is Erin Forsley. I've been past president and Forest Hills Council, and I'm the current chair for the community event. Forest Hills Council is a nonprofit made of representatives from all my schools, PTOs. Hosting an event like this aligns with one of the key components of our mission, to support open communication between the administration, faculty, parents, and the community, as well as encourage parents and public involvement in the district. There are three Board of Educations to set up for election in November and five candidates running. We are pleased to have all five candidates with us this evening. Mark Bell, Forrest Heiss, Jeff Nye, Erin Wazuski, and Jeremy Moore. Before we begin this evening, each board member selected their order for answering questions in our seated and seated corner. Each candidate will be given three minutes to make an opening statement and two minutes for a closing statement. They will answer the same questions and will be given one and a half minutes to answer each. Time will be strictly enforced. We do have timers for the evening who are located in the front of our room. Our timer will raise a yellow card when there are thirty seconds left and a red card when the time is up. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Anna Conley, a senior at Anderson High School, and Grace Adams, a graduate of Anderson High School and a third year at University of Cincinnati, for doing our filming and questioning tonight. And now, it is a pleasure to introduce you, Dr. Trish Brands Miller, as moderator for tonight's event. Trish is a dedicated member of this Cincinnati community and currently resides in East Lemon Hills with her husband of twenty-five years. They are the proud parents of four grandchildren. Trish's journey in education is a testament to her commitment to student success. She holds a BA in Political Science from Northwestern University, and after a twenty-year career in the transportation and logistics sector, she transitioned to a career in education. For the past decade, Trish has served as a high school math and social studies teacher, and associate principal, and currently is an adjunct professor at the University of Cincinnati. Her experience in various leadership roles with Cincinnati area schools included her time as a lead teacher and instructoring leadership co-chair. It highlights her dedication to improving educational outcomes for all our students. Her academic background is further strengthened by a master's degree in secondary education from Xavier and a doctorate degree in educational leadership from the University of Cincinnati. Dr. Miller, we thank you for being here tonight, and without further ado, I will turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, it's my pleasure. Thank you Erin. Good evening and thank you for joining the Forest Hills Council for this important virtual meeting candidate event. Tonight I welcome the five dedicated candidates who are on the ballot for the Forest Hills School District Board of Education. The purpose of this evening is straightforward, to provide our community with a valuable opportunity to listen, to learn, and to understand each candidate's perspective on the issues that matter to Forest Hills. My name is Trish Miller and I will focus on questions submitted directly by members of the Forest Hills community. We received a total of fifty responses to the candidate question form, and then questions were carefully aggregated by content, and they were prioritized based on frequency to ensure that we address the most pressing concerns of the community. One final note, the format of this evening's gathering is a Q and A. Our goal is to foster space for respectful dialogue where all is deserved. While we may not be able to address every single question that was submitted, we encourage you to reach out to the candidates directly if your specific question is not coming tonight. Thank you again for your engagement and let's begin the conversation. Candidates, welcome and thank you for your commitment to Forest Hills School District. Again, the candidates on the ballot for the election for the School District Board of Education are Mark Bell, Forrest Heiss, Jeff Nye, Erin Wazuski, and Jeremy Moore. Candidates, you have three minutes to provide an opening statement and an introduction. We will start alphabetically by your last name, which puts you first, Mark.
Good evening, and thank you all for including us tonight, and thank you my fellow candidates for being out there with us. My name is Mark Bell, and I've had the privilege of serving on Forest Hills School Board since March, when I was unanimously appointed by the board of current members. I'm running to continue that service, and I'm deeply committed to the power of public education to change lives and to strengthen communities. Like many of you, I am a parent who's walked the journey through Forest Hills, from elementary school all the way through graduation. My kids are now young adults, but the years in the district have shaped who they are, and they've shaped who my wife and I are as parents. My youngest daughter Chloe has a condition called Red Sinne. It is a condition that renders her non-ambulatory gangnam bird. For her, inclusion in a classroom wasn't just a policy discussion, it is our family's life experience. I saw firsthand how powerful it is when a district embraces every student, no matter what their challenges, and creates an environment where all kids can learn side by side. That's the kind of perspective I can bring to this board, while grounded in real experience, not just talking. Professionally, I built my career in the numbers in accounting and finance. I bring the skills of analysis, accountability, long-term planning to the board. Our district faces zero challenges to meet these requirements. Balancing budgets, meeting the needs of students, and rebuilding and restoring the trust of the community. These aren't issues that are going to solve by slow-mo political theater. They require steady leadership, the ability to listen, and a focus on the results. That's what I've done during my brief time on the board so far. I've lowered rhetoric, we've built consensus, and we've kept the attention where it was, on students, teachers, and families. Now, this election gives our community a choice. We continue to build on what we've started these last eight months, a calmer, more focused board that puts education first, or we can go back to distractions and divisions that drain energy from our classroom. I believe parents, teachers, and taxpayers deserve better than that, and that's why I'm asking for your support. I bring a lived experience of parenting, the skills of a financial professional, and the perspective of someone who's already tested in this role. Most importantly, I bring a commitment to make sure every student in Forest Hills, from the highest achievers to those who need the most support, have the opportunity to succeed. That's what I've been working toward, and with your support, that is what I've continued to do.
Thank you, Mark. Next, we have Forrest.
Thank you. My name's Forrest Heiss, and I'm Forest Hills to the core. I'm one of three generations of Forest Hills graduates. Since nineteen forty-nine, the last seventy-six years, there's not been one year that there's not been a heist in Forest Hills. I am staunchly pro-public education and staunchly pro-Forest Hills. I was raised in this community, and after meeting my wife in med school, we chose to move back here to raise our family. We have four children, three Forest Hills graduates, and one who better be graduating in May. My education through Forest Hills has given me and my family so much I strongly desire to give back. And our community has given me that opportunity. elected me to serve on the Forest Hills School Board for twelve years, where I served as president for five years, vice president for three years. I bring an unmatched level of expertise and leadership to this place. Professionally, I'm an orthopedic surgeon at OrthoCinci. I was educated at Wilson, Turpin Junior High, Forest Hills Junior School, and graduated valedictorian from Turpin in nineteen eighty-eight. After graduating from Stanford University, I returned to UC for med school and then did for residency. I've been team physician at NKU for twenty-three years, and served professionally as chief of surgery, chairman of the Orthopedic Institute at St. Elizabeth, and the OrthoCinci Board of Directors for over a decade. These roles demand professionalism, tenacity, and the ability to build consensus and collaboration with varied viewpoints. I have a strong will to make our community better. For years, I've coached baseball, softball, soccer. I've volunteered at high school concessions and elementary school tournaments. I've announced the Forest Hills 5K in JV girls and boys' soccer and basketball games. Now, I'm a longtime member of Turpin and Anderson Boosters, Forest Hills Foundation, and the PTA and PTOs of every school my children have attended. I love our community and I'm supremely proud of people in it. During my time on Forest Hills School Board, I served on every committee from finance to curriculum, as well as many subcommittees. I participated in employment and unemployment of four superintendents and three treasurers. I've helped pass many levy campaigns, and I've managed the failure of levy campaigns. I have experienced dealing collaboratively with many different viewpoints and facilities, curriculum, HR, state mandates, student wellness, changes in leadership, teacher turnover, legal challenges. I base my decisions first and foremost on what is best for our students, taking into account all the variables present in each situation. I'm widely known as being professional, level-headed, and a consensus builder. And this approach to even contentious problems leads to collaborative solutions. And I'm committed, in the past ten years, not only am I the only sitting board member willing to join again, but I've watched those three board members resign before finishing their first term. I've seen a lot, I've been through a lot, and I'm ready to experience leadership to build back to the board. Thank you.
Thank you Forrest. Next, we're going to hear from Jeff.
Hi everyone, I'm Jeff Nye. I'm running for the school board because our kids deserve to know adults in their lives care about their education. We can make sure students understand our every decision in the board base, and make sure our schools are safe and walking places for all students. Like many of you, my wife and me and I moved to Anderson specifically so our kids could go to Forest Hills. Both of our kids went to Maddox, and now we got one at Anderson. But also, like many of you, we've been incredibly disappointed, incredibly frustrated at the complete lack of leadership at the top of the district. It has gone on for far too long. Many of you know that I've been going to nearly every school for many years, taking my three minutes to call a comment, and trying to talk about these issues today. There's no interest from most of the board members about dialogue, collaboration, or actual problems with me. There are current former board members that I have asked to meaningfully discuss these issues or talk something about something on the phone, and it's just been a flagrant refuge. They're not interested in that. That's not a public service, that's not leadership. Our kids and our community, all of you, deserve better representation. It's time for new leadership in the district. I have a sensible takeout. First and foremost, I'm an active and involved parent. I've volunteered in every school my kids have attended, and multiple schools that they have. Whether it's chaperone field trips, or reading a library reader, or we're doing program events in community partnership, program, or cell program, or serving for the Forest Hills on education. These are things I have done, these are not things I did, these are things I'm doing right now. In my day job, I'm a lawyer, I'm a litigator, and that means that every single day I work with other lawyers who are always in clients' interests or diametrically opposed to mine. But you know what, we work professionally, we work collaboratively. We identify issues together, we try to find common ground we can to reach the best result for all our clients. I'm a good communicator, we build consensus with them. I'm a confident man in difficult decisions. I know no one who means it. These are schools, these are schools that our school board is severely lacking in the resources that we need. I've spent the last six months running this job more than actually closer meetings at this point. Jeremy and I spend a ton of time getting out of the community, meeting all of you, and it's been great to talk about issues with all of us, whole very together. I know, I'm looking forward to answering your questions here tonight, and I know we're not going to get it all done. You can reach out with your questions and answer them through our website, family links of ForestHills.com. You can add those through that, by email, Facebook. We have a key conversation going. They make your time, they answer your questions, and they make your squad.
Thank you Jeff. Erin, you're next.
Hi, I'm Erin Wazuski, and I'm running for the school board because I am a big believer that a strong school makes a strong community. And I believe that I can add value to the board through my qualifications and my bipartisanship. So let me talk about three qualifications. I can sum that up by saying, parent, lawyer, teacher. Number one, I'm a parent. My daughter's at Anderson, my son's at Daniel, I've got two nieces at Anderson, and then he was recently graduated. And my family does all of the nice. Just this week, we have girls volleyball, boys volleyball, scouts, soccer, orchestra choir, marching band, gymnastics, more marching band, more volleyball, and that's just this week. And that's a pretty normal week for us. And that's not my nieces, that's just my kids. But that's one of the things that I'm looking for in a school board member, is if people who are active in the current school year, the current kids, to be, what is it that's important to people and what is it students are experiencing? Second, I'm a lawyer. I've been practicing here for fifteen years, first as a business attorney, and then in the past eight years I've developed a specialty in nonprofit financing. So preparing for a board meeting is literally part of what I do for a living. I have advised hundreds of organizations on governance and strategy and finance. And third, I'm a teacher. I've been a teacher for twenty years, longer than I've been a lawyer. I started a literacy program for children when I was in college, so I was teaching in classrooms from eighty to eighty, encouraging kids to read. I was a high school teacher for a year, and I'm currently a faculty at Harvard Law School where I've been for ten years. This year I had ninety-six students and a whole lot of homework to be graded. The last thing I want to talk about is bipartisanship. I grew up in a family with two parents, one Democrat and one Republican. And from the very early stages of my career, I was mentored by giants of bipartisanship. And in college, I was selected for a national fellowship for bipartisan civic engagement among young people. So we had Democrats and Republicans living together in a college dorm, doing internships, doing policy discussions, and doing volunteering. Then the next year, I was hired on the staff of that program and helped run it. After I graduated from college, I was hired on the staff of the nine eleven commission's nonprofit. The nine eleven commission was a five-person panel of five Democrats and five Republicans working toward cooperation in one of the highest stakes environments that you can imagine, which is national security and public safety in the wake of the terrorist attacks of the nine eleven. That class that I mentioned in Harvard, one of the things that I teach is how to bridge parts of the divides. And you do it through things like looking for shared interests, commonalities, and the things that you're all holding to work toward together. And one of the things that I'm most proud of is this campaign. I am so very proud that I have Republicans, Democrats, independents, and first my voters, signing my petition to get on the ballot, volunteering for my campaign, and pledging to vote for me for this campaign.
Thank you Erin. And now, your friend Jeremy.
Hi, my name is Jeremy Moore, and I'm opening to your interview, I'm in room four, floor four, for Forest Hills School Board. Well, I'm thrilled there are five candidates up here who are supremely qualified. What sets me apart, and I think my greatest asset to the board is my professional career. For the last twenty-three years, I've been a public school teacher here in Ohio, in Cincinnati area. Nineteen years, passed nineteen years at Loveland, and four years before that at Milford. And from that experience, I think there are two key aspects that will help me serve in this school. The first is that I love teaching, I love education. I truly believe that education can transform lives. In my experience teaching and working with education, innovation comes up. At Loveland, when I arrived, the AP Physics C course was an independent study course. We had two or three kids who'd take it once a year in a study hall. I worked to get that course a fully offered course, which we now have multiple sections on. A few years after that, there was a need that I saw for another physics course. Here are toward students who have less than stellar math skills. We call that project physics, and that physics class, it's about three or four sections a year now. And the core of the class is that, in class, we focus on the first eight or nine concepts in a normal physics class, but we do it purely conceptually. We cut as much of the math out as we can and we focus on hands-on experience. Each unit is all around a project, or students will build something and create something, or improve something, or even compete with each other as part of the learning process. A few years after that, we had another renovation and we saw a need for a skill transfer. And I worked with one of our school counselors to bring eight or nine different industries into the school, who then met with our students and kind of introduced their history, what their job looks like, what their career path looks like, what their, you know, their pay is in some cases. Soon after this, after this, I'm sorry. After the skill transfer, two years later, it's now we've got twenty-five people, what, thirty companies has come in. It's turned to a big event that we hold in the back gym and out takes a half minute. The second aspect of my career that I think is going to be beneficial is my time at Dave Public Schools. I've worked on many levy campaigns, and those campaigns I've been kind of fluent in talking about school finance. And I'm very good at explaining what a mill is or why we need levies to be a person. In addition to that, policy. I have seen policy play out over the years, twenty-three years now, both in the short term and the long term, for our buildings, for our staff, and for our students. And I think seeing that policy play out will enable you to perspective to the Forest Hills. Thank you.
Thank you Jeremy. Now we'll move on to the questions submitted by the constituents of the Forest Hills community. We will rotate the candidate answers based on random numbers selected for the candidates, to give all candidates the opportunity to provide a thoughtful response. Each candidate will be given one and a half minutes to answer each question, and we're going to start with Mark. What do you see as the primary strengths and the primary growth opportunities at Forest Hills schools at this time?
The primary strength is the people of Forest Hills. Whether we all agree or we disagree vehemently on something, this is a very active community, a community that is very invested in the schools. I think that is by far our greatest strength, is everybody in this district. And that includes parents, that includes faculty, that includes administration, certainly even includes students. That is our single greatest strength. It is what makes us a destination district. It is what makes Turpin and Anderson rank so highly in the US News and World Report. It's what makes us rank so highly in the scorecard that just came out. It's what sets us apart as a district. That is our biggest strength. As far as our greatest growth opportunities, our greatest growth opportunities really, and we've all talked about it, it's let's make sure we can all come together. There is no reason, I always go back to Anthony Scalia and Babe Ginsburg, and they were diametrically opposed in their political views on the Supreme Court. And yet, they were the closest of friends. And there is no reason why each and every one of us that sits up here on the school board, why we cannot all get along, why we can all not, at the end of the day, just accept we may disagree on certain viewpoints. There is no need for name calling, there is no need for rhetoric. We need to come together and come up with the best solutions for our kids.
Thank you. Jeff?
Thank you. Our greatest strength is certainly our people. Our students are amazing scholars, they're amazing athletes, they're amazing artists, they're truly inspiring. They're doing incredible things. Our teachers, our staff, absolutely wonderful. Notwithstanding all of the turmoil we've had in the district the last few years, the teachers keep showing up, and my kids have had great educations here in Forest Hills. I'm very grateful for that. I think though, that one of the things that I've been hearing, and I'm sure some of the other candidates covered this in the last six months or so, when we're out meeting people, is we talk to people who say, I moved to Forest Hills to raise my kids here, but now that my kids are having kids, they don't want to come to Forest Hills. They're not interested in dealing with the politics of the school board, you know, on the school board, and all that nonsense. And we're losing teachers, same thing. We've lost so many teachers the last few years. Again, the teachers we have here are great. We need to make sure that we turn this thing around so families want to move here, just like my family did. And so we're recruiting the best teachers, staff, administrators, and talent for our district. That's our growth opportunity.
Thank you. Jeremy?
Thank you. I also agree, our biggest strength is our staff. Over the last twenty years, we have hired fantastic teachers, administrators, bus drivers, counselors, career professionals. The people who do the work with our kids are top-notch, and they always have been. We have gotten some of the best people in education here in Forest Hills, and I would like to keep that going. A growth spot, I think, looking at our report card, the college career workforce and military readiness, we've got three out of five stars on that. That is something that I, that's kind of my specialty. At Loveland, the students I've worked with and the things that I just talked about, contribute directly to that college career workforce, military readiness piece. It's not just preparing students for college, which we do have a lot of, but also preparing students for the workforce, for places like the Great Oaks, preparing them for life after education so that we are putting out the best, best adults that we can. Thank you.
Thanks Jeremy. Erin?
I agree, it's the people. Last year, my daughter overestimated her ability to both ride a bicycle and carry a viola at the same time. And I figured this out when she came home without her viola. And I said, well, when are we going to go get your instrument? And she said, Mrs. Maine is bringing it. And that was because the crosswalk guard at Summit saw that she was having trouble with, then rescued the viola and then drove it to our house afterward. Because that's the kind of schools we have at Forest Hills. And here this week, I can't tell you how, I'm sure all of you have done the same thing. I can't tell you how many fundraisers I have bought for walkathons, for the elementary schools who are raising money for their schools. And seeing their passion for their schools, and seeing these entrepreneurial kids who are making bracelets and making chocolate dipped marshmallows, I got some of those last night from Wilson, and making lemonade slushies on Eight Mile from kids I had never met before. And my neighbor who went so far beyond her goal through a bake sale and through keychains that she had made, just really inspired me about how much kids care about their schools. And the opportunity that I think we have for growth is adjusting to this new world. The changing regulatory landscape is going to be a real issue. And so that's one of the reasons I think we need people who can understand that kind of new environment and help Forest Hills navigate it.
Thank you. Forrest?
So I actually anticipated this question, and we talked about it, and I said, you never want to be the fifth guy. I mean, what are you, no, that's not the people. No, of course it's the people. I mean, it's the people, we all moved here. The data says that up to seventy-five percent of people moved into Anderson Township for the schools. I think it's ninety-nine percent. We have great restaurants, we have great parks, but we don't, it's not, the reason you come here, there are other places like that, is for our schools. And even if you don't utilize our schools, you come here for that. You come here for the property value, you come here, you can buy a really big house in Hyde Park and send your kids to private school. But you come here because we have options, and the schools are such an important, so. The people, so it's the people that come in. So now, we have parents that are demanding of our district, they demand excellence. We've got kids that are pushing hard to meet the expectations of their parents and the other people in the community. And then, and then we have teachers and administrators that are doing their job. So, I'm on 30 seconds. So, obviously, I'm a huge Forest Hills fan, okay? And that's what we're all here for, that. For improvement, we always need to keep getting better. I don't like that we went from 5 to 4.5. 4.5 is awesome, there are districts that would give their left arm for that, but not ours. We need to keep pushing to get better and look through all of those things, those state report cards, so that we can push all of our kids and raise their expectations.
Thank you, Forrest. All right, the next question is about community engagement, and Jeff, we're going to start with you. How will you personally engage with the community as a board member? And what expectations for community engagement will you have for the district administration?
That's a really important question. This is something that I've been talking about at school board meetings for years. Our current board is not engaged in the community. You can find the clips on YouTube, YouTube, I've been saying this for years. The board needs to get out into the community and meet people. When we have school events, our board members are not showing up. That's a problem. How do I know they're not showing up? Because I'm there. My kids are already involved in all the things, whether it's soccer, or dance, or art, or orchestra, whatever they're doing, I'm there, the board members should be too. The board members should have community listening sessions. As I said, I go to these meetings, I take my three minutes, there's no dialogue, there's no feedback. If I'm elected, we'll have periodic listening sessions where you can come and tell me whatever's going on in the district, so I can take those ideas back to the administration and back to the board. That's very important. I have the same expectations for the administration. The administration handles the day-to-day operations of the schools, but they should also be the public facing, you know, the interface between the district and the community. We're not doing a great job at that either. I think our superintendent did a good job helping us get the levy passed, but I don't see them around the community as much as I'd like them to. So, it's very important they get out there, engaging with the community, they're at the events, so we can rebuild that trust, that relationship between the district and the community.
Thank you, Jeff. Jeremy?
Thank you. The way that I will personally engage with the community is the way I'm doing it now. I will continue talking to anyone and everyone about public schools. This is my passion, and this is what I do professionally. Talking about schools comes easy, and that is whether we agree or disagree. I'm always interested to hear different perspectives from people in the community, because that's how you get good ideas, that's how you learn new approaches, that's how you learn from new perspectives, and I think that's extremely important. As Jeff kind of mentioned, being engaged with the community is not just a one-time thing, it needs to be ongoing. And I think that as we move forward with this, that ongoing communication will take the form of emails, will take the form of meetings, will take the form of the community coming together and telling us what's undermined. I think for that to happen, you have to be willing and open to listen, and I am willing to do that. For our administration, the same thing applies. They need to be communicating regularly and effectively with our community. That means not just parents of students in schools, but also community members, also the kids themselves. Seeing them out of the community at events is beneficial, not just for the kids, but also for the staff, for everyone in the community, because they feel that the community is coming together and that it's cohesive.
Thank you, Jeremy. Erin?
If I'm elected to the board, I will engage with the community the exact same way we've been doing with this campaign. And that's the things that Jeff and Jeremy talked about, being at all the events, saying, "What questions do you have about the school board, or about the race, or what are you seeing with your kids, or what are you experiencing?" And I think that you should have dialogue with people, even if you don't agree with them, and maybe especially if you don't agree with them, because that's the way that we come to a community consensus. Community building was part of my job before I moved to Boston, before I moved here from Boston. I was a resident advisor on a college campus with my husband and young children. We lived in the dorms, and don't worry, we had our own bathroom. But community building was part of our job description. And so, we were hosting monthly open houses for 50 students or more to come over to our house. And those students came from all over the world and didn't always agree with each other. But one of the things I learned about engaging with the community is that it's not just about you engaging with them, it's helping them connect with each other. And I think that's one of the things that can help Anderson grow into an even stronger community. People here all want the same things. We want strong schools, we want to protect our investment in our properties, and we want the kind of community that people are attracted to and stay at, year after year and generation after generation. And I think the message that I try to make with community is genuine human connections can improve the quality of life for everyone.
Thank you, Erin. Forrest?
All right, so kind of piggyback on some of what I've said before, I know it's what we can do, but what we have done. I've been there, we've done this, our community involvement was a lot better in the past. One of the best places to get community involvement and get input is actually, and I'm not totally just sucking up, but the people in this room, okay? Forest Hills Council is made up of the shakers and doers of the district. They are the lifeblood of the district. One of the things that the board has gotten away from is showing up at Forest Hills Council meeting, which just blows my mind, because when we went through some terrible, I mean, COVID and some, you know, the building issues and our levies, and all of, the people in this room and then the people that were there this morning are the ones that actually get stuff done. We provide policy and we provide directive, but it's that the people that we've all talked about are the ones that really get stuff done. So, the Forest Hills Council, going to the PTAs, when I was on the board, we, each of the board members had a PTA that wasn't one of their kids to, that was assigned to them, where it's kind of a host PTA. So, we would go through, and you could funnel the questions and comments from the community in through the PTA, which was great, and it kind of pushed people to go to PTA meetings. Administrative wise, I'm a big fan of open house. The last superintendent I had, we had him have office hours at Servati's or at Panera. And you could just show up at any time and sit down with the superintendent of the school district and discuss whatever you wanted to, and that was very popular. Those are some things.
Thank you, Forrest. And Mark?
Always fun to be fifth. I think, really, as everybody's talked about, it is engagement with the community. Whether it be the community at Forest Hills, whether it be the community at your church, if it's local. One of the things that I've started to advocate for on the board is reinstituting our advisory council. I think having, it's a lot like Forest Hills Council, but having some business leaders, having community leaders. So, there's a focal point that we can all sit down and talk about, what are the major issues that we're hearing about? Whether it be business issues, whether it be community issues, whether it be student issues. We need a kind of a formalized process to do that, where you actually get good viewpoints from different folks, whether they go to our schools, whether they live in the district or don't go to our schools. We need to hear these different viewpoints on what we're doing right, what we're doing wrong. One of the other things that I would like to start doing a lot more of, we have lost more kids than I think any of us would like to private schools as well as to homeschooling in the last four or five years. I think one of the things that I've started to talk about with Larry, I think it was my first board meeting in April, was that we need to start doing exit interviews with families who are leaving our schools and find out why are they leaving, what are we doing wrong? Because if we get those students back, that's 200 to 250 students that we've lost over the last five years. We get those students back, it means we're doing a better job than we're currently doing.
Thank you. Okay. The next question, we are going to start with Jeremy. This is a long one, so if anybody needs me to repeat it, I will. How do you plan to approach decision-making that is both effective and equitable on behalf of a district where there's traditionally significant conflicting opinion on what's the best choice? For example, if there was a legitimate reason that Forest Hills had to make budget cuts, what would you consider cutting and why?
Okay, I think I've got it. Thank you. So, to handle effective and equitable decision-making, the first step is to look at the stakeholders and try to find where they are coming from and where we need to meet them at. This can take the form of interviews, it can take the form of just conversations, it can take the form of looking at data. Once we know where we stand at the start, then from there, we can make a plan. And then, once we make a plan, we can start to try to execute that plan. And the example that you gave, could you remind me of the example?
Yes, the example was, if there was a legitimate reason that Forest Hills had to make a budget cut, or budget cuts, what would you consider cutting and why?
Perfect. So, this is a great example for this question, because to make those cuts, the first thing you need to do is you need to address the stakeholders and find out what's the most important to everyone involved. Once you know that, and once you have talked to the community, then from there, you can start to look at where could we possibly make those cuts and have the least effect on the students possible? Ideally, if we make any cuts, we would like to leave anything that touches students or staff out of it, especially students and staff that kind of sit low on that equity pole. That said, that may always be possible. So again, that community involvement is paramount, because when people feel that they've had a voice at the table, they're more willing to work with you and more willing to try to adjust to your decisions.
Thank you. Erin?
When you look for approaches that are equitable, one of the best ways to do that is to look for data, and specifically disaggregated data, and data that can be analyzed without bias. So, when it comes to something like a budget shortfall, I have seen this again and again with some of the nonprofits that I counsel. And two of the things that I would say are most important there are information and communication. Because if you don't have information, then people are going on what they think are obvious candidates for a budget cut. But the problem there is that what's obvious to one person is not often the same obvious candidate to another person. And so, you'll have one person saying like, "Gosh, I guess our XYZ program is really pricey, so that should be what goes, because that'll make a big difference." Or somebody else will say, "Well, we're using last in, first out, right? The most recent program is the one that'll get cut first." So, without an actual systematic approach to how you look at a budget shortfall, that's when you end up with inequitable outcomes, because you've got people going on intuition or anecdote instead of a real system for management. And the last part of that is communicating. Back to the points that you've asked us about, what do we, how do we communicate with the community? You really need to have input, but to know that the passions of one group should not dictate what's best for the entire district.
Thank you. Forrest?
So, on my 12 years on the board, I, we had a mixed board all 12 years. And to be fair, I didn't know that until the last two years, because I didn't, it wasn't really a thing. And we've been through this. We've been through, you know, in 2009, 2010, these were dark times in the district, in the country, in the world, really. I mean, it was, so we had, we had failed a levy, that's one of the things that got me interested in actually serving on the board, was I was very involved in the levy that failed in 2009, and we saw that this was going to be a big issue. And what we were able to do, and during the good times, and I will thank the people that passed the levy last time, is that our next four years looked pretty good. Budget cuts, I mean, we're going to be looking for fiscal ability or ways of stretching this out like we, that Forest Hills always has. But it's, we're not the dark times that we were in 2010, and then when we failed one about 10 years later. So, it's, what you bring through, and absolutely, you take a look to see, we try and minimize the impact of the classroom. And it's nice having varied viewpoints on how that looks. And in the end, you know, administration, some of the things that we think about are bigger things, and you know, some aides and things like that, we were able to cut. And with the teacher's support, we're able to condense things down where we very much minimized. We still got our excellence distinction even in those darkest times, so it can happen.
Thank you. Mark?
First of all, at the end of the day, you need complete transparency in any decision that you're making as a board. You need to make sure all board members have the exact same factual data. You need to make sure the community has that factual data. It's one of the reasons why I'm pushing very hard to get on our district website, the financial data for the last five years and projected for the next five years, so that everybody has the same data, so that if we're having disagreements, it's about where we should go, not about where we currently are. So, when we have a decision like that, whether it be a budget shortfall or any other shortfall, first thing you have to do is make sure we all understand the problem, we all agree, come to agreement on what the actual problem is. Secondly, from there, what you have to do is you have to identify what your alternatives are. Without knowing all the possible alternatives, you may miss the best one. Once you've identified all those alternatives, then it's literally a matter of going around the room, talking to the community, talking to the administration, talking to the teachers, and figuring out, all right, what is the best possible outcome? It doesn't mean it's an outcome that's not going to hurt somebody, and whether I could be talking a budget decision or just another policy decision. You're trying to pick the option out there that minimizes the impact on the most people. You are simply trying to pick the best option. The only way you can do that, transparency, identification of the problem, and know all of your possible solutions before you pick the best one.
Thank you. And Jeff?
I think the first thing I would say is that we need to keep in mind that if you start asking this question when you're faced with that budget shortfall or faced with the need to make that cut, it's far too late. You need to know well in advance, if things turn south, as they might, you know, where do our priorities lie? Where can we cut, what can we trim? I think the second thing to keep in mind, there's some beeping over there, sorry. The second thing to keep in mind is that our first priority to the district is to our students. We need to keep that in mind, you know, we, obviously, we have obligations to the community, we have obligations to taxpayers, but our first obligation as board members would be to the students. The third principle I keep in mind here is that you should look at configurations before you should look at cutting things. Sometimes you can rearrange things physically or geographically to save costs, so configurations over cutting. And then, the fourth principle to keep in mind is that you emphasize value over cost. Dollars have to be spent, but it's not as simple as finding dollars to cut, it's finding the value that you need to preserve.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to move on to a question with regard to policy. This is a two-part question, so if you need me to repeat any part of it, let me know. Number one, part one, do you agree with the district's law, sorry, we're going to start with Erin, I just want to tee you up for that. Do you agree with the district's lawsuit against the expanded Ed Choice program in Ohio? And would you continue the district's participation if elected? That's part one. And part two is, do you consider yourself an advocate for public schools? Why or why not?
Yes, I agree with the lawsuit. I teach a class on, at Harvard on how to advocate. And what I tell my students is, you need a plan and you need a team. So, a lawsuit like this is a way that Forest Hills can team up with other public schools and advocate for what we need most, which is fair funding for public schools. I strongly believe that public schools should be funded by public dollars. And so, when it comes to something that affects not just all Forest Hills, but public school students across Ohio, teamwork is the name of the game. So, to me, that's one of the most effective ways to move that forward. What was the second part?
And the second part was, do you consider yourself an advocate for public schools? Why or why not?
Absolutely. To me, being pro-public school is a number of different things. I went to public school K through 12 and also in college. But to me, the biggest part of it is being willing to advocate, being willing not just to accept the decisions that come to you on the board, but to say, what is the best thing that we can do to give our kids the best chance of going to the most excellent school we can provide here in Forest Hills? So, public school advocacy means going above and beyond and doing all of those things. It might mean going to Columbus to advocate, it might mean advocating in a lot of different ways, it might mean building consensus here in the community, and I'm willing to do all of those things and have that. That's what it means to me to be pro-public schools.
Thank you. Forrest, would you like me to repeat any of this?
So, this, the vouchers are, it is, you know, we bring up the political parties, and it is a Republican thing. And it is something that, it's not going away. It's our, we have a supermajority in the state, so it is part of our reality. My view of it, and there's a lot of push to have quote-unquote "universal vouchers." Well, I'm actually cool with universal vouchers, meaning everyone gets the same amount. If our kids, our public kids could get $6,000 or $7,000 and give it to Forest Hills, we wouldn't need a levy for our lifetimes. We get about $2,000 from the state, but yet, the state says that education's worth $6,000 or $7,000, depending on the level of education, whether it's primary school or secondary school. So, if we could just make it fair, we're golden, okay? And all public schools would be golden. As far as pro-public education, I mean, I've said it in my first, I'll say it at the end. I'm in this, I've been this in the long haul. Every part of my being is positive for public education. More kids are in public education than any private education ever. So, we are responsible for our kids, the public education is the education for the majority of Ohio. And so, that's what we're here for.
Thank you. Okay. Mark?
I am absolutely a proponent of joining the lawsuit, as evidenced by my vote to join the lawsuit back at that board meeting. To me, it's a no-brainer, it's the obvious answer. We, public schools are being done a disservice with the way the structure is currently set up. I completely agree with Forrest. If they just treat everybody the same, say, "Hey, we're going to give everybody a check for $5,000, go where you want to go," we would never need another levy, we are good to go. That doesn't bother me at all. I think it's completely inequitable how it's currently being run. It's why I end up getting yelled at by some of my fellow Republicans, because they, they're like, "How can you disagree?" I disagree very simply because if I'm sitting on this board and I'm running for a public board, I'm always going to support the public schools. I don't care what the Republican, what the Democratic position is, this is a nonpartisan position. If you're a member of the public school board, you should always support public schools. So, clearly, I'm an advocate of public schools, I'm a product of public schools. My kids are a product of public schools. Without public schools, I honestly, I have no idea what my youngest daughter, what happened to her. I'm like, wait, I didn't get a warning?
Thank you, Mark. Jeff?
The answer to the two questions are yes and yes. Yes, I agree with joining the Ed Choice expansion lawsuit, yes, I'm an advocate for public schools. I disagree with some of these folks on one thing, though. It is absolutely not enough to, you know, even out the size of the voucher payment between private schools and public schools. The Ohio Constitution in Section 3, Article 6, says, "Provisions shall be made by law for the organization, administration, and control of the public school system supported by public funds." That is a constitutional mandate in this state. Public money should not be used for private schools. The binding of budget that was passed at the end of June allocates about $2 billion to public schools. If Forest Hills got its pro-rata share of that, we'd get $8 million. An $8 million check would last us well into the next decade. Imagine if we got another $8 million from the state every two years? That's what they're taking away from us. Public's money should be spent on public schools. And yes, I'm going to advocate for public schools. I'm here, I've been at every meeting for the last three years, talking about things we can do to improve our public schools. I attended public schools K-12, I went to law school at UC, I moved here so my kids could go to these public schools, because strong schools make strong communities.
Thank you, Jeff. Jeremy?
Again, yes and yes. As far as being for the lawsuit, I think that the way that vouchers have been enacted in Ohio is inequitable at best, and at worst, it's borderline, it's dangerous for public schools. It is a significant amount of money that is being taken out of public school funds and being funneled into private entities. As Jeff mentioned, here in Forest Hills, that would equate to $3 to $4 million yearly, which would do a whole lot of good for our public school students. I think being fiscally responsible means being for this lawsuit, bottom line. If you are working for the public schools here in Forest Hills, you are for this lawsuit. Second, as far as being an advocate for public schools, this is something I've done for a very long time. I've mentioned some of my levy work over the years. I've also become a willing and frequent writer to people in Columbus, a phone call to people in Columbus. I've shown up in Columbus. Couple of quick examples, two bills that I've written letters for in the last month against. Senate Bill 68 tries to establish ESAs, which essentially is what Forrest was saying, giving everyone a check for $6,000. In Florida, that has resulted in people going to Disneyland and buying video game systems. House Bill 153 tries to force all people who are running for school board to register with the party and to put that party registration on the ballot. I'm very much against that, because public schools should be for everyone.
Thank you. Constituents submitted several questions related to diversity, including references to the previously celebrated Diversity Day and the Diversity mural at Nagel Middle School. This will be a two-part question, and we're going to start with you, Forrest. Can you describe specific policies or actions you will advocate for to ensure that all students feel supported, safe, and represented in our schools? And the second part is, would you support reinstituting Diversity Day? Why or why not?
So, you know, DEI has become its own animal as far as politically. Bottom line in our schools is, we want all of our kids to feel a sense of belonging. If kids want to come to If, if kids want to come to school, if they have a sense of, inclusion is now a, kind of a hot-button word, but if you actually just look at what inclusion means, it means that they feel, they feel welcome, they have friends, they, they wanna come to school. Those are the kids that do well. So we've tried over the years, and, and we continue, we have PBIS, we have, we have a lot of mental health and support systems so that people can, so that kids can come in of all variety of diversity, again, which is another hot-button word now, but we have a diverse background, mostly socioeconomic in our, in our district, but where they can come in and, and feel a sense of belonging, and they, they wanna come in. The Diversity Day was a, it was, it's a different look at what, what the kids want. We do have a, a strong socioeconomic diversity, but we don't have a lot of diversity racially or, and some of the other, so bringing in a celebration of, of other types of cultures, I'm, I'm for. It gets political, I think it can be done apolitically, and I think that, I would advocate for that in the future.
Thank you. Okay, Mark?
Um, I'm, obviously, as I've stated in my opening statement, I'm a huge fan of inclusion. I think without inclusion, it, it doesn't make any sense to us, for us to have a public school system. Diversity, I feel the exact same way. Like, we are all better off, the more we are exposed to different cultures, different religions, different ethnicities, it doesn't matter, we are all better off the more we have that. As far as the decisions regarding the mural, as far as the decisions regarding Diversity Day, I do, I would never wanna make a decision regarding one mural or one in-school activity. I would much rather have us, as a school board, look at it from a policy standpoint, what do we think makes sense from a policy standpoint for the entire district? I certainly understand the sensitivity around the mural. It was, it was a, a student-created piece of art, and I, I, I've told our superintendent, I don't think it was handled as well as it should have been handled. It, it, it creates animosity where animosity does not need to be created. So as long as, as we embrace and discuss a mural, or we discuss and embrace Diversity Day across the district, I think as long as we have policies that make everyone feel included and policies that embrace diversity, that is what we need to do as a board.
Thank you. Jeff?
Um, diversity is just a fact. Whether you like it or not, we live in a diverse community. Having diverse representation on our faculty and staff improves graduation rates, it improves test scores, it helps build empathy and critical thinking, some of the components that are the, in the district's portrait of a learner framework. It's just a fact, and it's good for our students. Inclusion creates opportunity. We need to include students not just with disabilities but from all sorts of different backgrounds and beliefs. Include your neighbor in things, you'll learn a lot. We should work carefully as a community to craft policies that work for everyone. But diversity, equity, inclusion is not a matter of policy, it's a matter of principle. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Jeremy?
Thank you. As far as specifics, specific policy and actions, I do believe that when the mural and Diversity Day were canceled, it kind of started a ripple effect. I think that there is some repair that needs to be made with the community and with the school board because of that. As far as actions, I think engaging with the community openly and honestly and asking them what they think would be a good first start. As far as replacing any kind of mural, I mentioned this once before, that I think it would be a great idea to ask the students at Nagel what they think, ask them what they believe would be beneficial to the future generations, and then work with them and work with the staff to make that happen, whether it's another mural, whether it's a new mural, whether it's something completely different. I think students creating art for other students is powerful. Excuse me. As far as Diversity Day, I would, again, I would leave it to the students and the staff, but if they were in support of bringing it back, I would support them in that endeavor. I believe that in a district where 85% of our students are Caucasian or white, it is incredibly important for our students to meet people from other backgrounds and people who look different than themselves, and to realize that we are all humans and we are all in this together. Thank you.
Thank you. Erin?
When kids walk through the door, we are responsible for their safety, and that's all kids, all races, all religions, all beliefs, LGBTQ community, kids with disabilities, kids without disabilities, and kids from all socioeconomic background. So when we talk about diversity and equity and inclusion, I think sometimes people have a different idea in their mind of what that looks like than what we see in the reality of what our district looks like. So all kids need to be supported, and when it comes to something like the mural, what I, first of all, if we asked my 13-year-old son, we would get a one-word response on, on what he thinks about anything. But when it comes to something like the mural or Diversity Day, what I think about is that these were efforts by students to make other feel, other students feel included and feel safe and feel welcome in the school. And so what message does it send to them when the leaders, the adults in their lives, take that away? To be clear, I don't think the board should have been involved in canceling Diversity Day in the first place, but since it was, I would support the re-institution of Diversity Day if that's what the students want, and I feel the same way about the mural. The last thing I'll say about a specific policy is that I think one of our biggest areas of diversity is socioeconomic. And so what I'd like to see is that the existing policies we have for financial assistance for particularly optional items, so things like the payment to go to Camp Kern, or the DC class trip, or sports fees or theater fees. We do have ways for people to access them if they can't afford it, either temporarily because of a layoff, or more permanently, and I'd like to see those become default so that there's no stigma around requesting them.
Thank you. Okay, so we are gonna start with Mark.
Okay.
Can we parents count on you as a candidate to advocate for evidence-based curriculum and programs that address emotional and social issues that our middle and high schoolers face, such as bullying and mental health concerns? If so, what specific policies or actions would you support?
Absolutely. I absolutely support that. Look, raising kids today isn't like raising kids when we were all kids. Like, it is a totally different world today. The pressures that are placed on kids happen not only within schools, certainly we have bullying, we've had bullying unfortunately forever, but now you have social media coming around that, and that creates a whole new le- layer of bullying, a whole new layer of mental health issues for students. So I'm, I'm a 100% proponent of making sure that we have embedded within the curriculum social, emotional learning for those students. We've done a great job over the last four or five months since, since I've been on the board, partnering with local organizations, the local hospitals, to make sure we have a layered approach to helping students in the mental health. One of the biggest things we need to do is make sure, as Erin alluded to earlier with, with the stigma around financial stuff, we need to remove the stigma around students asking for mental health help. We need, that is one of the biggest things, like, it is, we are, no one is okay, everyone has issues. We need to remove that stigma that somehow makes you weaker or makes you lesser of a human by asking for help when you need help. We all need help, we all need to help others.
Thank you. Jeff?
Yeah, absolutely, I support evidence-based policies, including PBIS, including social, emotional learning. The evidence shows that these programs are tremendously successful. They're tremendously popular. Over 90% of teachers and parents support both of them. The evidence shows that these programs help build empathy, and empathy helps build community. Community helps build belonging, and when you belong to community, you achieve better. We absolutely should do that. I agree with Mark on this, it's okay to ask for help, we absolutely need to normalize that. All the evidence says so. I absolutely support these sorts of evidence, evidence-based policies, you can absolutely count on me to advocate for evidence-based policies. Again, I'm a lawyer, my day job is all about what the evidence shows, that's what we deal with every day, we need to trust the evidence and trust the science on this one. Jeff?
Thanks, Jeff. Jeremy?
Thank you. The answer is simply yes. As a science teacher, evidence is very important to me. It's something that I strive to teach students how to discover and how to communicate effectively. As far as mental health goes, I think evidence can be hard to find a consensus on, but I think it's important that we as a board strive to try to find that consensus. As Jeff mentioned, there are some programs that are out there that have become very popful, popular and very helpful. PBIS, sources of strength, there are also some community programs like Nest, which are very effective at coming in and working with students to provide those mental health services to students who may not be able to afford them outside of the school environment. In addition to that, I think that building community and building culture will help with these things. Students feel excluded because we have a culture in our district right now where it is, you know, as Erin mentioned, when, when the adults take away something like Diversity Day, students are left to wonder who's not welcome and why. That kind of environment leads to more and more and more mental health issues as students try to figure out why the adults in charge aren't taking care of them and aren't doing the things that they're supposed to do for them. So, yes, I would support any evidence-based mental health policies and any programs that we could bring in to help our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Erin?
Yes, I am in favor of evidence policy, evidence-based policies across the board, not just for social, emotional learning and not just for mental health, but those are two areas where it's really, really important. And especially to integrate it into the, into the curriculum. So we've talked about PBIS, the Positive Behavioral Intervention and Supports, so that's essentially the idea of proactively supporting good behavior instead of just punishing bad behavior. And I see this with my kids in the schools that they go to. So my daughter comes home with a little sticker that says, "Ask me how I was Summit Strong today." Or at the, you know, we go to pick the kids up and somebody else is wearing, and "Ask me how I was Summit Strong today." And you know, I'll ask the neighbor girl and she says, "It was because I was quiet during the, during the line when nobody else was." Too bad for everybody else, but she got a Summit Strong sticker for that. One of the times that I was truly most proudest of my, of my daughter ever was when I asked her what her Summit Strong sticker was for, and she said that there was a new kid who transferred into the district who was sitting by themselves in the cafeteria, and she invited them to join her table. And that, to me, is exactly what we should be teaching with the, with social, emotional learning, because these are the skills that will help people in life, and they are the ones that will help them help their friends. So whether it's that, or positive office referrals, or extra Friday recesses, it's age-appropriate, but these are exactly the kind of evidence-based data, data that we should be using to make policies just like this.
Thank you. Forrest?
So, fifth person in line, but I'll say PBIS, the Positive Behavioral Intervention and Supports is, is a great program, and I was on the board when that came in. So not only am I in favor of it, I've proven that. So we have MT, the Multi-Tierred System of Supports, I try to remember all the things. We are, are so much better now than we were 20 years ago, because we know more, we know how important mental health is. Even if you look at it just from the bottom line of our kids doing well, if their, if their mental health is good, they're gonna do better in the classroom. So even people who are, are very Machiavellian at the end justifying the means, well, no, here it is, we get a better result with mental health. Now, obviously, it's bigger than that, but I, I've seen that we also have some community partnerships, which is something I think we can develop even more with Children's Hospital and our middle and high schools, and then the NECO program in elementary schools, we have a mental health collaborative. We can branch out and not have it all necessarily in-house, but to branch out with our community partners, because there's excellent community partners with Step Up Anderson, and then the Dalton Diagnostic, I see that's coming up, has telehealth for our kids too, which we haven't got to the finance part of it, but it's, it's nice because these are community partnerships that don't necessarily cost the district and our taxpayers money, but it also, we get the benefit for our kids.
Thank you. Okay, you guys are doing great, we have three more questions, so we're, we're moving right along. The next line of questions is around student support, and we are gonna start with Jeff for this question. What will you do to ensure that students with IEPs continue to receive the services and support they need in the face of potential budget cuts or policy changes? And how will you involve parents and students in the decisions about special education programs?
Yeah, thank you for this question. This is something that I alluded to earlier in the question about what would you do if you need to make budget cuts? We need to make clear as a board where our priorities are, what our values are, it's not just about cost, it's about values. Obviously, we're getting more and more students who have 504 plans or IEPs all the time, and so going forward, we need to make sure that we're not reacting to the increase in students or the increased needs, but we need to make sure we're proactive, we need to look ahead and make sure we're recruiting those teachers. We used to have, we used to have, I think, four ESC classrooms that were consolidated merciful, we're up to nine now. There's ESC classrooms at Summit and Wilson now, too. So the need keeps expanding. We need to make sure as a board that we are planning for it, recruiting for it, and budgeting for it. Was there a second part to the question?
The second part of it was, how will you involve parents and students in decisions about special education programs?
Oh, sure. You know, as we've said before, we need to make sure, I see the sign, okay, sorry, I got 20 seconds. We need to make sure that we're working collaboratively with all the involved stakeholders. Parents need to have a seat at the table because they know what's best for their kids. You know, we need to work with them to develop programs and policies and make sure they're getting their adequate support we need, it's a simple thought.
Thank you. Jeremy?
Thank you. So ensuring students with IEPs that they receive the services that they're legally titled to is extremely important, both for our school district, but for us as a community. Some of our students on IEPs, which includes one of my own daughters, are some of the students who need the most help. Making sure that they're getting that help via our professionals who we've hired, who are the experts in those fields, is something that we can't take away. It's something that I don't think, in terms of budgeting, that, that that would be something that I would even consider putting on the table. As far as involving parents, we have a very, very strong special ed community here in Forest Hills. They will talk to you and they will let you know what they think, which is a great thing. It's up to us to listen to them. We need to make sure that we are receptive to the, the concerns that they have, receptive to the complaints that they have, and also to the successes. There are a lot of great success stories here for students with IEPs, and making sure that we continue to involve those families in any decisions we would have to make is super important. If it got to the point where we had to make decisions on cuts, those families would be the ones I would wanna talk to first, and I would want to have those difficult conversations with them and really kind of figure out where could we make this work? And I'm not sure that we could, but, and that would be a very difficult conversation, but that's the job. Thank you.
Thank you. Erin?
I think it's important to remember that we have legal obligations to provide education to everybody, including kids with special needs of all different kinds, including kids with IEPs and 504s and, and really across the board. And to me, that's one of the things that makes public school so special, is that we educate everyone, even when it's hard, even when it's expensive. And that's one of the things that I think makes public school unique, especially as compared with other types of school that's available. And you know, special education comes in a lot of different forms. When my daughter was in first grade, reading did not come naturally for her, and so she worked with a reading intervention specialist, and now five years later, she's off the charts. That's an example of a temporary need that was addressed by resources that Summit provided to her that were extremely effective. I have another member of my family who has Down Syndrome and was, was on an IEP for a long time and her, outside of this district. And her education focused on workforce readiness and really being able to be a job holder after she graduated from high school. So those are the kind of things that are longer term. In terms of making sure that parents are involved, I think one of the things to do is to connect them to each other. You know, Jeremy mentioned we've got a good community here, but sometimes when this is new for you, you feel a little lost, and you're thinking like, gosh, am I the only one who's doing this, and what, what resources are available to me? And I think my son is the only one who has difficulty with X, Y, and Z. So really helping them connect with resources at the school and each other, I think is the way to move forward.
Great, thank you. Forrest?
So, we have an excellent special education program. Hats off to Betsy Ryan, who's a true lion in, in this. The board is, we provide overall policy, but it's the people on the, on the ground, our special education department, and the, their interaction with the, the parents and the students, that really where it is. I don't think any of us here are IEP experts, and we're not supposed to be, but we need to make sure we have the people that can do that job in the positions to do the job. And it is, it is extremely important and one of our, our strong points in our district. And, and we're not perfect, but we work hard at it. And, and that's where it is, so from a board perspective, I, I wanna keep good people in those spots, people that I, I trust and I, and have great, have great education in that, far more than what we will ever have, and keeping the parents involved. So the parents I've found in the IEPs are, tend to be very, you don't get an IEP if you don't care about your kids. I mean, there's a lot that goes into that. So getting the, the parents connected with the educators and facilitating that from a 35,000-foot level is what, what the board needs to do.
Thank you. And Mark?
As you heard, this one's pretty near and dear to my heart. As a parent of, of a student who required full-time support, you know, full-time mobility, full-time eating, full-time doing anything, obviously, IEP, I wouldn't call myself an expert per se, but, but I've been filling them out for over two decades, so I'd like to think I understand what's going on. Honestly, it's one of the things that makes Forest Hills a destination district. People come here when they have kids who have problems. If you look at our IEP numbers over the last five years, they have grown exponentially. And some of that's because we do a better job as a human race identifying things more quickly than we ever had before. Some of that is simply because we are that good as a district at what we're doing. Obviously, I'm a huge advocate of IEPs. Like, when you talk about budget cuts, the students who need the most support are going to be the last students that I would ever recommend cut. Like, those students rely on, they need that support. So there's no way I would ever cut that. I think we do a great job as a district. We have an advocacy program here within the administration to reach out to folks, especially new parents who just came on IEPs, so that we help them because they don't necessarily know what they're getting into. I think we do a great job as a district. Betsy Ryan, who unfortunately just retired, does a, did a great job of making sure she wasn't advocating always on behalf of the district. She was advocating on behalf of what's the most important thing we can do for that student.
Thank you. Okay. Sort of on the other end of the spectrum, Jeremy, we're going to start with you. Forest Hills does a great job with their ELO program for gifted education for math. Other districts also offer gifted options in reading and other subject areas. If elected, would you support adding gifted programs in reading grades four through eight?
Thank you. The answer is yes. If elected, I would support adding those programs. When you're looking at the student body in the school district, there are, you know, there's a spectrum there where you've got students who achieve kind of all along that spectrum. A lot of times when a school district starts focusing on the kids who need the most help to try to raise scores, we lose track of those students who are on the other end of that spectrum, those gifted students. They're, you know, sometimes left to their own devices. It is important that we meet them where they're at. That means if they're a gifted student, that we meet them at that gifted stage and we try to grow them further, whether it's through reading, whether it's through math, whether it's through any other subject. Part of being there for every student includes being there for gifted students and making sure that we as a district are serving them just like we're serving all the other students. Thank you.
Thank you. Erin?
I would absolutely support it. When I moved to Forest Hills, one of the things that surprised me was that gifted equaled math here because there are lots of ways that a kid can be gifted and there are lots of ways that you can challenge a kid in different subject areas, whether math is one of their strong suits or not. So I understand there are already pilot programs starting in some of the schools for what they're calling ELO, ELA, which is a lot of letters, but Extended Learning Opportunities in English Language Arts, and I very much support those. I was in a gifted program when I was a kid and we covered everything. We covered classic science fiction. We covered, I remember giving a report on whales, which is where I learned what it meant to be boring because I thought that just mixing up the names of them and what they ate and the length would be enough. And then I got two whales into my presentation and realized, this is really boring and I still have 10 whales to go. So it was through a gifted program that taught me things like that. So when we came here, I was thrilled that the ELO program was so great and that it included logic as well as math, but I was surprised that it didn't have these others. The last thing I would say here is that we should all have all-access enrichment. We have that already through programs like Invent Ohio. That's the local affiliate of a U.S. Invention Convention for Innovation and Science. We have it through Destination Imagination and we could have it through things like future problem solving so that kids who want those accelerated challenges, not just if they're identified on their own as being here, but if they want to challenge themselves, that it's more of an all-access pass to things even beyond math that can stretch them.
Thank you. Forrest?
So, the easy answer is yes, of course. We want everything for all of our kids. And the harder answer is, and we haven't had one discussion on finances, and that tells us a lot of where we are as a district right now and that we're sitting pretty good. And that's a good thing, don't get me wrong. That is, that is great. I agree, I was in ELO when it went 100 years ago and it was all language. Now it's math. More than just the gifted though too, one of the things that came out and when we look at our performance measures and things like that, is there's stratification all the way through. I want all of our kids to be pushed. So for our most gifted kids, absolutely, we want to get programs that push them. Though just off-gifted kids also need that push, that a regular class between an AP class and a college prep, there's something in between there, whether that's done through, and what we've tried to do is we've tried to do it through the existing structure. We have teachers that have stratification even in their classes. So things like that, that can be done a little bit more fiscally. You know, we can't have a new class for every kid. Ideally, we could individualize, we talked about IEP, individualized learning on each kid. That would be, that would be ideal, not with 7,000 kids. So we've got to try and get it so that we can, we can make it great for each kid wherever they are, from gifted to the most needy and so that they can all excel. And I'm a big fan of that and we've been working on that.
Thank you. Mark?
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to speak for Jeff because I know he's going fifth. I'm pretty sure all of us up here are good. Absolutely, we agree with this. Most of these questions, we're all kind of like, yes, I agree with that, it makes total sense. I am for, like, look, we're on the board. We have three main jobs on the board. One, to ensure the safety of all faculty, staff, and students and anybody who comes into our building. That's primary, that's the biggest thing. Second, we need to do whatever we can to maximize the educational opportunities for our children, to prepare them the best we can for whatever they're doing after they leave here, whether it be military, whether it be the trades, whether it be post-secondary education. Great. We have to do that as Forrest, within the constraints that are placed on us by the dollars that are allotted to us or allocated to us by both taxpayers locally via property taxes and from the state. So, to the extent that we can keep pushing those boundaries further and further to allow each student kind of individualized plan to the extent that that's possible, absolutely, to the extent that we can more stratify, so we have more layers than just the three or four layers we have right now, absolutely. It's just one of those, you're going to have to find a balance between maximizing those opportunities for every single student and you have that constrained resource on the other side called dollars.
Thank you. And Jeff?
Yeah, of course I support an ELA, ELO-type program. I think the question asked specifically about grades four through eight, I think it strikes me that it is somewhat easier in grades seven and eight where we've got all our kids in one building. You know, the Forest Hills Foundation has funded programs in the middle schools. For example, the, you know, buy Newberry War reading books for all the fifth or sixth graders, whatever it is, in at least some of the elementary schools, maybe all of them. We can rely on programs like that that are outside district funding to some extent. But yeah, absolutely. And again, it comes back to a question of priorities and budget and value. This is something we absolutely should support if we can afford it. If we can't afford it, we should maybe focus on something like Nagel where we can do it more economically than one building. And if not, we should definitely be looking at outside resources like the foundation, like others, to find financial support for these programs because we want our kids to have as many opportunities as possible. Absolutely.
Thank you. All right, this is the last formal question and then we're going to have a lightning round. Erin, we're going to start with you, it's a two-part question. Describe your current involvement in Forest Hills Schools. How have you personally invested your time, money, or energy into the district? And what makes you uniquely qualified to unite this school board?
I mentioned some of this at the beginning, but I feel like my kids do all of the things. I think between my two kids, they're on nine different sports teams. They're also involved in music, also involved in drama, also involved in things outside of the district specifically that still have them interacting with Forest Hills kids and other kids. So I say the same thing that Jeff and Jeremy say. We're at all the things already because whether my husband is coaching something or I'm chaperoning a field trip or helping set up a scholastic book fair or dropping off teacher snacks, we're there every week, this year, last year, the year before, next year, the year after that, the year after that. So it is, it would be too difficult for me to list all of my kids' activities except to say that they are still in the phase where they want to do everything. And I think that's one of the big strengths of Forest Hills is being able to offer so many different things for so many different interests and help kids find their passion in a way that's supported by the schools and supported by the things that we are making a priority. And I think I'm uniquely qualified to do this because of the reasons I said before. I'm an active parent, I'm a lawyer, I'm a teacher. I have a lot of different ways that I see myself contributing in a real way to the future of the kids here. And so if you have any doubt that I will put every single ounce of my effort into this, my kids go here too.
Thank you. Forrest?
So, I have been there, I've done all of that. And I continue, now I have my youngest is a senior, so it's a different timeframe. In fact, looking at the next four years, it is, we're all parents first. It's hard, not impossible, I was there, but it's hard to run nine different sports and be involved in the school district and in the school board. The last two years I was on the board, I was spending probably 10 to 15 hours a week. This was during, I mean, this was terrible times, but a lot of, a week of doing this. And God bless my wonderful wife, okay? I mean, it is, she is absolutely the rock of our family and is able to, to push where I was doing things for the school board, she is doing, she was doing some of the PTA mom, the Forest Hills council, she was doing other things. We come as a family. So I actually look forward to the next four years of being able to even commit more time than I did back in the day when I was on the board and had all those other activities. What was the second part?
The second part was, well, I think you kind of hit a boat. The question was, describe your involvement, how you personally invested your time, money, and energy into the district, and then what makes you uniquely qualified?
Right, and why is it uniquely qualified? I mean, you know, I've said it, I've been there, I've been involved in every part of the district and I plan on being able to build on that to help the district to continue to exceed.
Thank you. Mark?
I'm the only one up here who just had his last kid leave the district. In fact, the first day, my first board meeting back in April was the first day in almost a quarter of a century that I did not have a kid sitting in Forest Hills, which I actually enjoy now because I've kind of, as Forrest said, I've been there, done that. Like, I can see the big picture now, sitting at 35, 40,000 feet because I've had kids go all the way from preschool here all the way through high school. So now I get the opportunity, obviously, you know, back in March, two Democrats and two Republicans unanimously appointed me on the board seat so they could see the qualifications that I had even back then. And it's a great opportunity for me now that I have a little bit more time on my hands because the kids have now, for the most part, left the house, that I can go to activities and go to fun things that I want to go to, not necessarily that I have to go to now. So I can go to the football games, I can go to the basketball games, I can go to the activities, simply as a board member. And I don't have this vested interest in one school or one activity. I can see it from a 30,000-foot level and really see, all right, what makes the most sense for this district, knowing that I have this, you know, 25, 30 years of experience of had kids sitting here in these schools.
Thank you. Jeff?
I think the first part of the question was to describe some of your personal involvement in the schools. I touched a little bit on this, I think, in my opening. I've been volunteering in the schools since my kids started in Forest Hills Schools back in 2014. I've been a classroom reader, I've been a lunch parent, I've been a library helper, I've chaperoned field trips to museums and zoos and the ballpark, I've chaperoned Camp Kern, I've chaperoned luouts at Nagel, dances, you know, on and on and on. I'd like to give you one example though, some of my kids weren't involved in it at all. I'm a lawyer, a litigator, I have an appellate practice when I can get it. And so I know some of the judges on the Court of Appeals and I reached out to someone and said, hey, what if we took some students to the Court of Appeals? And so we got about 20, maybe 22 students, some from Turpin, some from Anderson. My kid wasn't one of them, believe me, she doesn't care about the Court of Appeals. But I met with them a few times, told them what the cases were going to be like, what it's like to work in the Court of Appeals and litigating the Court of Appeals. And we took them down there, they saw some arguments, they met with the judges, they got a tour of the building. And then we brought the entire court to Titus Auditorium at Anderson High School for hundreds of students to see, to see the court live and in person. So that's some examples of my personal involvement. I see that a lot of times, I'm afraid I can't answer the rest of the question, but I guess I've got to, sorry.
You have time.
Oh, I do have time, she's giving me more time, okay. The question was, what makes you uniquely qualified? I want to confess to all you people, it has not been my lifelong dream to serve on a local school board, but when I started going to school board meetings a few years ago, people would come up to me after the meeting and say, hey, thanks for what you said, you know, thanks for speaking up about this. And that's kept me coming back. I thought about running two years ago, didn't think it was right for me to do at the time, but people kept saying, you'd be good at this. Keep coming back. That's what's kept me coming back. So I've heard from many people that they think I've got a voice that needs to be heard and that's why I want to serve.
Thank you. And Jeremy?
Thank you. So, my current involvement, I have a sixth grader and a ninth grader in Forest Hills Schools. They are involved in softball, tennis, soccer, music, choir, theater, and I've got one who wants to try karate. So, there's a lot going on. In addition to those things, I volunteer with the PTO. I have chaperoned field trips, I have worked Sixth Grade Olympic Day, I have been at VIP Night at Maddox a couple of times. I will say I disagree with Forrest. It is not hard to do this. It is being willing to sacrifice. We're putting in 40 hours a week right now on top of what we're doing professionally just for this campaign. When elected, I will continue to do this with the board while my kids still do all of these activities. That does involve my wife doing a little bit more, but at the same time, I think it's important that we treat this professionally as a job and that we put our best foot forward. And if that means that I don't get to do some of the things I want to do because I have to spend a little bit of time after 10:00 or 11:00 p.m. reading, then so be it. That's something I'm more than happy to do. What makes me uniquely qualified is that I've spent the last 23 years inside of schools watching these policies play out and watching how they affect students and how they affect our staff, how they affect buildings and how they affect school cultures. And I think that's a perspective that will be unique to this board and will be helpful to us moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So that concludes the formal questions. We're going to do a real quick lightning round and then we're going to have you each provide a closing statement. So the lightning round is this, and I'm going to start with you Forrest, 30 seconds. Tell us what you love most about Forest Hills Schools.
I love the fact that we support all of our kids. We have great teachers, great administration, we have a great product that we put out that produces fantastic citizens in the world. So I love the fact that many of my generation have come back. We could live anywhere in the country and we come back here so that our kids can have the same experience that we had when we were here.
Thank you. Mark?
It's kind of our beginning, our first question all over again. I mean, it's the people. It's honestly, sitting up on the board right now and people disagree with one another. It's the fact that there are so many people that care so deeply about our school district. That is what separates us from so many other districts where people are just apathetic and they don't care what's going on. There are so many people here that care. There are people who have current kids here, former kids here. So many people care. And have that many people care, that is what sets our district apart.
Thank you. Jeff?
The thing I love most about Forest Hills Schools is it's given my kids an opportunity to find the things they love. They've had some incredible teachers here in Forest Hills Schools. And while I knew my kids might have liked this or liked that, when they connect with that one teacher who really turns the light on for them, that's a special moment. We've got a lot of wonderful people who've done for my kids and I think all of yours too.
Thank you. Jeremy?
For me, it's the staff. My children have had nothing but excellent experiences in the schools. We've had new favorite teachers every year for five or six years running now. They come home with a smile on their face, they tell me what they learned and I can tell that over the, you know, over the weeks and over the months, they grow as people. Our staff is our biggest asset and I'm appreciative of that. Thank you.
Thank you. And Erin?
For me, it's kindness. I just see kindness every day in the district and it's one of the things that's my favorite part about Forest Hills. Even when I was on my way here tonight for Meet the Candidate, I was getting so many messages from people wishing me luck, talking about how much they care about the campaign, how much they care about what's happening in our schools. And I can feel my pocket buzzing right now and this is live, so maybe that's another person telling me that or maybe somebody's trying to reach me about my car's extended warranty, I don't know. But I'd say that kindness truly is one of the things that sets Forest Hills apart.
Great. So I want to thank you all for your thoughtful responses and we're going to take a breath here. What you're going to do next is you're going to have the opportunity to move into a closing statement. So each of you will have two minutes for a closing statement and we're just going to take the order of responses alphabetically by last name, but we're going to go last to first. So we open with introductions, one versus the last, and we're going to conclude it going last name, last to first. So are we ready? Okay, all right. So the order will start with Jeremy. You have two minutes for your closing statement.
Thank you. As I've talked about, my professional experience over the last 23 years lends itself to this position. Working inside of schools, I've done many of the jobs that go on inside of our schools. Obviously, teaching, but also things like writing curriculum. I have innovated, I have created new classes and introduced them to our school with a great level of success. In addition to that, in all of those cases where we added a class or we added an activity, we identified a need and we worked as a team to fill that need. That team being the teachers, the administration, and the school board. Every new class I've added, I've had to present the curriculum to the school board, have it approved, and then talk with those people about what it's going to look like, what it's going to cost, how are we going to effectively deliver this instruction to students. it's gonna cost, um, how are we going to effectively deliver this instruction to students? As a teacher, I've also been on the other side of contract negotiations. Um, I am very, very familiar with how's, uh, union contract negotiations, negotiations go inside of schools, um, and I think that perspective will be helpful to us. Um, we are gonna have to negotiate a staff contract here in the next couple of years, and I think that that would be a big asset for that. In addition to that, um, schools have been my business for the last twenty-plus years. Um, this is what I know and this is what I do professionally. Um, I, you know, I have a degree in education and I have a master's degree in education. Um, it's something that I strive to get better at and I think is important. Um, and lastly, I'll say this, over the last two months, uh, I've spent a lot of time with Jeff and Erin, um, a lot of time. I mentioned forty hours a week, and that was not a joke. Um, that is legitimate. Um, we are going to continue to work this hard for you guys and for your children when you elect us in November. We are eager to bring this professionalism and this work ethic to you and to our district. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. Erin?
I want to reiterate my qualifications of parent, lawyer, teacher, and chief among those parents. Uh, to me, the kind of school board member I want is the kind who's cheering in the stands and sitting on the auditorium and picking up a volunteer shift. And I appreciate the concern that it's hard, but I want to assure you, I can do hard things. Just this year, at the Volunteer Year, Volunteer of the Year Awards at the school board meeting, they had a quote on the screen that said, volunteers don't necessarily have the time, they have the heart. And that's very much the way I feel about serving on the school board. When we moved to Forest Hills, we got in the car with a real estate agent, and we said, where are the best schools? And she said, Forest Hills. That's not happening anymore, and I want it to happen again. So when we think about what we need to do for the future, we need to advocate for the schools as if our future depends on it, because it does. And that's what Jeff and Jeremy and I will do on the school board.
Thank you. Jeff?
Uh, thank you. Thanks, everyone, for your time tonight, thanks for your questions. Again, if you have questions that didn't get answered here today, you can reach me and Jeremy and Erin through familiesforforesthills.com, uh, reach out to us through there, come to one of our events. We've done dozens of events for the last however many months. It's been great meeting you people, we're gonna do a bunch more. Come meet us. I just want to leave you with three thoughts about the campaign and our priorities for the district. First, the top priority is to put students at the center of every decision that we make. We'll make decisions based on evidence and data, not politics. Forest Hills Schools should be places where all students should be safely welcome, and all means all. That's a legal responsibility we have, and that's a moral responsibility we have to our kids. Uh, we believe that inclusion creates opportunity, history happens, science is real, and you don't ban books. Second, we need to rebuild the trust between the district and community. You deserve a board that is accessible and answerable to you, because once we get politics out of schools, we have a lot of big decisions to make together, and the best decisions are made collaboratively and carefully with input from all the stakeholders. That's kids, parents, staff, and non-parents, everyone. And then third, we need to protect the investment we've made in the district. And that doesn't just mean taking care of kids, doesn't just mean short-term fiscal responsibility or long-term financial planning, but it absolutely does mean all those things. It means making sure we lead from the front and make Forest Hills a destination district again for families like mine who moved to the district for the schools, but also for teachers, staff, administrators. We need to attract the absolute best talent, and we can do that if we work together. So thank you for your time, and thank you for your support.
Thanks, Jeff. Forrest?
First, I, I do want to thank the Forest Hills Council for hosting the Candidate Night, it is truly one of the most important parts of the campaign. It's the one opportunity for the public to see all the candidates sitting together, uh, which is important. I also want to thank my fellow candidates for the courage to step forward and face the public. Uh, I, I think it's unfortunate that we can't do this in front of a live audience, but it is kind of a reflection of the times we live in. It's critical that the voters get to know the candidates before casting a ballot. Everyone involved in this election, from the political parties, the PTAs, and even the wider community agrees that this is one of the most important board, uh, school board races in recent memory. Once again, we will have a new board, and for the only, the second time in over fifty years, we could have three brand-new members joining, two who have just two years of experience. The fact, the past four years have shown how challenging it is for a board to operate without institutional experience. That's what I bring to the table, legacy knowledge of where we've been and where we need to go. We don't need a board that thinks alike, we need a board that works together. Diversity of ideas is vital to truly represent our community. During my first ten years of the board, as I said before, I, I didn't even know the political affiliations of my colleagues. And those were the good old days, when the focus was giving our kids a great education while conserving community resources and doing our best to stay out of local and national news. We had balance and we had collaboration. Today, we know that there will be three endorsed Democrats on the board and the community are represented. Most importantly, my focus has always been and will remain on providing the very best education for our children. I want Forest Hills to remain a, a destination district, not just for our teachers and new families, but for our own kids when they return to raise their families here.